Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting, October 12th, 2020. Apologize to everyone for us starting late. We did have committee meetings prior to our City Council meeting tonight, and those committee meetings went over. So nonetheless, we are going to try to be as efficient as we can with our council meeting. So with that, we will call tonight's meeting to order, and we will begin with, I tell you what, before I call tonight's meeting to order, I would like just to make a special note and mention a special recognition to one of our council members. And I want to say congratulations to none other than Walter Jones and Mike Hickinbotham for completing the requirements for the basic certified municipal official training program offered by the Alabama League of Municipalities. And as a result of this, they're going to be subject to a ceremony in October 29th, so guys get ready for that. And you guys will be 2020 certified municipal officials.
[applause]
Which will be contrary to the rest of the knuckleheads up here. So congratulations, and I just want to make note of that. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and call.
And I just wanted to say, I look forward to the opportunity to be able to hold this over all the new council member's heads, even though I'm not here anymore.
It's going to, sir, it will serve you well in some manner, I guarantee you. So, all right, we'll call tonight's meeting to order, and we will begin with our invocation and pledge. And I believe our invocation is going to be led by Mrs. Barry Smith, and followed by the pledge. Please rise.
Bow your head to pray with me, please. Isaiah 4031 says, "Those who hope in the Lord will renew their strength. They will soar on wings like eagles. They will run and not grow weary. They will walk and not be faint." Dear God, give those of us on this council, those of us who will be soaring in the next four years, and the new council members who will be joining us, renew our strength. Give us discernment and thoughtfulness as we approach the issues that we'll be facing the city over the next four years. Thank you for all the blessings that you have given to us. Help us to perpetuate those blessings, and be thankful and share them with others. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And let me begin first. We're going to carry over our minutes. Ms. Melody has just been a little busy the last 60 to 90 days, I believe.
Well, I was claiming technical difficulties, not busyness, but, so anyway, but I can do roll call too, also.
Okay, thank you. You're right. Let's do roll call vote first, establish form. Melody?
Okay. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Tames?
Here.
Mr. Hickinbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. Mccluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And President Wright?
Here.
You have everybody here in the forum, and it was not technical difficulties related to Mr. Walt, so it was not his fault.
All right, no problem. We'll look forward to getting those next council meetings.
I'll get them to you, I promise.
No problem, thank you. All right, we are going to try to address one board vacancy for our park board. We have an at-large opening that is expiring the end of this month. It is Jody Brant's position, and so we're going to open that, and we're going to keep it open and close it our next week, which will be October 26. I know Mr. Brant will be seeking...
I think you said the 19th, that you're going to try to close, you're closing on the 19th so that y'all have a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because the meeting is the 26th. I misspoke. Thank you. All right, so we're going to keep for the at-large opening, Mr. Brant's position. We're going to keep that open through the end of October 19th, and see if there are any other applicants. And we will take that up for action at our meeting on October 26. All right, so we will do that without objection. We do have a few items to add to the agenda. We had several committee meetings, but believe it or not, we only had one item coming out of the committee meetings, which is going to be 10-08-20, which is a request to address traffic concerns on Virginia Drive concerning school safety. It's coming to us from Counselor Walter Jones, and this is going to be added to our old business agenda for tonight.
President Wright, I may ask Mrs. Smith too, sorry. We may need to add 17-09-20, that Michael Thomason, for y'all to set the public hearing. Yes, sir, we, so we need to add, not unless it can't, not unless, because we did not put it to both places the first time. We didn't, we didn't put one to set one. So we do need to add 17-09-20 for special issues.
Can I make a comment, Doctor? We have to publish that paper. If we publish it wrong, we have to publish it. I really believe that the best course of action is to get the declaration and legal restriction, and then do know that you can set it legally and have it.
So then we'll just wait till next weekend? So we won't add that one, sorry.
All right, so we will not add that one, all right?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll be, again, adding 10-08-20 to tonight's agenda, old business. And then we'll have four items being added to our committee referral agenda. 13-10-20, which is a request to add handicap parking space on 29th Avenue at New Angled Spaces, coming to us from Counselor Andrus. And this one will go to our Public Safety Committee. We have 14-10-20, which is a request to add Wi-Fi access at Spring Park. This is coming to us from Councilors Gualtney, Andrus, and Tames, and we will send that one to Public Works. And we have 15-10-20, request to close Valley Place on Halloween. Do we have any hours for that?
We don't yet. Joe Stevens is going to be giving you more information, but if we could just go ahead and put it on the call, we can just, so we can assess it next Monday in committee, and then we'll have to get it out. Or we'll stop in case they check it out.
All right, so we'll...
Do you want me to add your name too, or just Joe Stevens?
I do.
Counsel?
All right, so I got, hold on, I got Joe Stevens and Mrs. Smith on that, and that will go to Public Safety. Yes, Mr. Walt?
Would this item not just go to the police department for a permit to close the street? That's typically what...
I, I thought we've done it before, where we've done, like West Hollywood.
We've done them both ways. We've done them both ways.
Okay.
I tell you what, let's send this one to committee, because we don't have time. How about that?
Yeah, right.
Well, they could go pull a permit tomorrow from the police department.
Well, they can, but if, if you want to do that, I'm fine.
We'll just leave it on committee, and if they go through the police route, we can just drop it in committee on Monday.
There you go. All right, so we're going to add that one to Public Works. Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry.
I had something, Walter, Mr. B., instead of the neighbors were requesting to close Oxford Circle on Halloween, after the last full session, is that necessary? Is that the case?
All right.
Counselor Wright, can I add a street to that as well?
Well, I think we've done it, I think we've done it.
I don't recall, I'm glad it's all.
All right.
I think the key thing is that HPD is aware, should they need to empty, so they can get a truck, or not put a truck down the street. So that, I think that's the notification process that goes along with the permit.
All right, let's just, let's just, let's just, we'll carry him through. So we're going to add 17-10-20, which is going to be a request to close Oxford Circle on Halloween, and Mr. Jones is going to give us times for that. That one will also go to Public Safety. So lots of Halloween discussions and Public Safety. And I did, I did get out of order there, didn't I? And I skipped over 16-10-20, which is a request to address ADA accessibility concerns on Cobb Street sidewalks near the Hall Kent Elementary. This is coming to us from Counselor Wolverton, and that one we will send to Public Safety, I believe, right?
Public Works, I think.
Oh, Public Works, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down. Public Works. Okay, so with that last addition, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Second.
By Mr. Mccluskey, second by Mrs. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, and the rest of you all who want Halloween closings may have to go through the noncommittee route. All right, we don't have anything on our consent agenda tonight, so we'll begin with our old business agenda, 18-08-20, which is a public hearing that was held on September 14 to consider declaring property located at 1125 Hardwick Lane a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. This was coming to us from Scott Cook with our code enforcement, with our police department, who I do not see here.
The league has said he was out of town.
Okay, well, that's, I forgot, he did tell us that last meeting. So we are going to carry that one over until our next council meeting. I think, I do recall, we were waiting for some issues to be addressed with the property, and we certainly hope those will be addressed by our next meeting on October 26 here in council chambers. All right, next item, 08-09-20, a public hearing that was held on September 28 to consider declaring property located at 2600 BM Montgomery Street, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Also a Scott Cook item, and so, and same thing, we're waiting for the property owner, I believe, to address some of those concerns, which, again, we hope will be addressed by our next meeting on October 26. So that will be carried over as well. Next item, 10-08-20, which is a request to address traffic concerns on Virginia Drive concerning school safety. This came to us from our committee meetings today, and Counselor Walter Jones, and I believe this is an ordinance, so we'll begin with a first reading. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to further regulate traffic on a portion of Virginia Drive and Palmetto Street in the City of Homewood, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, whereas it is desired the council to permit residents in Virginia Drive to have access to their property during hours otherwise limited by this ordinance. Now therefore, we're being ordained by the City Council as follows. That by the adoption of this ordinance, every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle shall be prohibited from making a left turn off of Palmetto Street onto Virginia Drive at the intersection of Palmetto Street with Virginia Drive between the hours of 7:15 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and 2:15 p.m. and 3:30 p.m. on Monday through Friday of each day of the week. Section two, that the left-hand turn restrictions as set out in paragraph one above do not apply to residents who reside on Virginia Drive. It's intended the city to permit residents who reside on Virginia Drive to have access to their property during hours otherwise limited by the provisions of paragraph one. Section three, any person found guilty of violating this ordinance shall be punished as provided by ordinance. Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances, section four, the chief of police shall cause erect markings or signs as described in paragraph one above. Section five, the ordinance, if any ordinance are in conflict with this ordinance, they are specifically repealed. Section six, that ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council.
And President Wright, I forgot to put on their report for Public Safety, so we need to give Mr. Mccluskey a chance to tell the motion to.
All right, thank you. So thank you for the first reading, and before we get to unanimous consent on the second reading, I'll take a report from Public Safety. Mr. Mccluskey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Counselor Jones actually mentioned that Mr. Kendrick would have a draft, drafted ordinance allowing the left-hand turn at Virginia Drive. Motion was made by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Anderson, passed five to zero.
All right, so thank you. It did come out a favorable vote. We're still dealing with the ordinance, so we will have to deal with unanimous consent to dispose of the second reading of the ordinance. So I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent from Mr. Mccluskey.
Second.
Second from Mr. Tames, and roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickinbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Mccluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So unanimous consent is approved, and now we have the item in front of us, and I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Mccluskey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden, and roll call vote. Melody?
Okay, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickinbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes, so that is going to be, ordinance 2785 is approved. Thank you all. Next item, whoop, we go to committee referral agenda, which has been amended, and so I will entertain a motion for approval of the committee referral agenda as amended.
So moved.
By Mr. Hickinbotham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so our committee referral agenda is approved as amended. That gets us to other new business. And we have 07-10-20, request to set a public hearing for a variance to the fence ordinance at 800 College Avenue, coming to us from Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department. And I think it's in Special Issues Committee. This will require a public hearing that we will set without objection for October 26, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Next item is 08-10-20, request to set a public hearing for variances to the sign ordinance to permit more than one sign per tenant on face of building to permit an increase to the allowable sign size at 3415 Independence Drive. This is coming to us from Dr. Corey Hartman with Skin Wellness Dermatology, and from Mr. Pew with our BEZ Department. Without objection, we're going to set that for public hearing for October 26 at 6:00 p.m. as well. Next item, 09-10-20, request to, for resolution fixing the cost of $16,334, which were found to be reasonably incurred in the demolition of the structure at 1117 Hardwick Lane, and assessing the same against the property under parcel ID number 29-00-22-4-013-009.000. That coming to us from Mr. Pew in our BEZ Department. And I believe we, we may have addressed this previously, and I think we're just getting approval for this, but I want to entertain any discussions or questions about this?
Is Mr. Pew here?
I am.
Hey, I was just, I wanted to see your text about, do you have something we can have as an attachment for that cost? I, I didn't get that from you earlier. Do you have something that we can put with the resolution as an attachment that has that cost?
I thought I included that with it. I can, I can shoot it to you right now.
Okay, okay. You may have it, I forgot to bring it with. Okay.
All right, so any questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
One question, and then I'll be happy to make the motion myself. So I'm assuming from this, which I think it's safe to send, but I just want to ask the question, I'm assuming from this, any kind of legal wrangling that was going on that might have clouded our ability to charge this money has been resolved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We demolished the house.
Well, I'm aware we demolished the house. I remember there was some sort of legal back and forth.
We can demolish the house, it's a legal...
Okay, all right. I'll move approval.
Okay, so a motion for approval from Mr. Hickinbotham, second from...
I have a question.
Mr. Wolverton, and before we vote, Mr. Gualtney?
Mr. Pew, is the $16,000 strictly the cost to demolish the house, or does that also cover...
I emailed you all the, the breakdown of it earlier today.
Oh.
So, but no, it, it actually, let me just pull it up. I've got it right here.
The statute provides that there's an increase of 50% of the actual cost incurred.
Okay, for city administrative activities, perfect. That's what I wanted to make sure.
It's $4,084 for the fencing that was up, $250 for the title search, and $12,000 paid to Grays to demol, to demolish and haul away the unsafe structures.
So it's actually... Hold on, is that it?
Yes, sir, it was, thank you. Just wanted to ensure the city was whole.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wolverton.
Sorry, I missed that. I'll blame the election runoff for that one.
Did you get it?
I, I, no, I made a mistake.
You said it already, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pew?
Just, so just to clarify, those were actual, actual costs the city already incurred, the $12,000 from Grays to do the demo and all that?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick, you were saying that we could go above that?
That is the amount that we can charge, Mr. Wolverton.
Okay, okay.
As far as I understand.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Pew, you're going to put a lien on the property, correct?
That's what the resolution office was.
Okay.
That's what this is about.
Yes, sir. It can't be sold without us getting our money.
That's correct.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to get a lien of $16,000 on that property. 10-10-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract and pay a fiscal year 2021 appropriation to the Birmingham Zoo. This is coming to us from Karen Carroll, the Vice President of Development for the Birmingham Zoo, and Mr. Burgett, our Finance Director and Assistant City Clerk, and Ms. Salter, our City Clerk, Assistant Finance Director. Can someone tell me how much this is, and why we're doing it now?
The mayor had had a different amount in the budget, but the council approved 10, and so they're asking for their $10,000 appropriation for fiscal year 2021.
They just want to go ahead and get it while they can, okay. Not while they can, but soon as possible. All right?
I figured that we'll be hearing from Ms. Andrus, same thing.
Yeah, do I need to put that in motion? I was going to ask that follow-up question for Red Mountain. Do I need to put that in motion for a request?
Yeah, they just, they just need to send me a Robert contract proposal, like they did last year, and we can add it to other new business on the 26th.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
From Mr. Mccluskey, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved, and that is...
I will say when I talk to Ms. Carroll, that she did indicate that they did, they did receive a pretty significant funding cut from Birmingham, so they were happy. All that was not, they were not, they were, they would have liked to have the original amount, but they're happy for what they got, so thank you.
Were you choosing your words carefully?
I'm, I'm not becoming a politician, I promise you, I'm not. This is City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director.
Okay, all right, and I had that as resolution 20-153. I think the other one was 20-152. All right, gets us to, I believe, our last item on our agenda, 10-08-20. Let me find that just a second here, which is a request to address traffic concerns on Virginia Drive concerning school safety.
We already did that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, will you approve a voucher?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, that's the only thing left.
Okay, I'm sorry, somehow I got things out of order here.
It should be 11-10-20.
Yeah, 11-10-20, right after the, the, is that not saying that?
Yeah, 11-10-20, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of September 29, 2020 through October 12, 2020, coming to us from our Finance Director and City Clerk. And who had the honors?
I did, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Jones?
I, I had several questions today, and Mr. Burgett answered all of them. There was one that I did not get an answer on, so I would move to approve all the vouchers except for PO 20-4085, which is, it's a, it was a, an invoice that I'm just trying to get some information on.
You say PO 20, which one?
20-4085.
Can I ask how much that...
Unless Mr. Burgett has an answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't read my ask, I'm sorry. I spoke with Chief Ross, and those are safety glasses for the tech team.
Okay.
That they're required to wear in any type of training. Then, and the question about the Oakleys, that's the brand that they are. So it was, the Oakley was not, I, I, you know, fancy.
Okay, then I would approve, I would move to approve all the invoices. It just looked, you know, I just wanted to make sure.
I grew by an Oakley glasses.
Second. All right, so motion for approval from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Tames. Mr. Jones, this is why we pay you the big bucks, sir, to catch that for us.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the vouchers are approved through October 12, 2020, and that gets us to our announcements. Mr. Mayor?
I'm happy to deny.
All right, thank you, sir. And let's see if I, I'm going to try to do this in order as we usually do. Ward one, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, I will set Public Works for Counselor Jones. When do you, how much time do you need?
30 minutes.
What time do you want to start?
About five.
Oh, that's right, we're not together tonight. Sorry, I'm in like mode like tonight, we've got, like, we've got council afterwards. I will set Public Works for 30 minutes at 5:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Tames?
I will set P and D for 15 minutes, 5:30. I'm sorry. How long did you say you were going to use?
30 minutes.
Six o'clock.
All right, P and D at six o'clock. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hickinbotham?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
I just want to say, thank God it's all over. I'm just tired of campaigning, so...
Oh, I thought you were talking about the bad weather or something, but...
No, I can, I can do some rain. It's all good. But no, thank you guys for tolerating the extra six weeks. It goes, goes for all my constituents and everybody else that was putting up with more door knocks and phone calls and messages and all sorts of stuff. But thank you to everybody that ran. Obviously, it takes a lot of energy, time, effort, and, you know, ultimately, a desire and will to, to make things better. And so, that, that's all tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Mccluskey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tames, how long do you need?
15.
15 minutes? All right, then I will set Public Safety at 6:15. And Ms. Smith, I'll probably need 30. I think there were three or four items that were added tonight, so just give me, give me 30 on that. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. And Mr. Jones?
Just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Wolverton. I know you worked hard. And Mayor Lake McCcluskey, going to miss you being in Ward Three. Have a new ward mate. So it's going to be, it's going to be a new day in November. So this seems like it's one of the longest cycles that we've had, but I appreciate people stepping up and running. You know, we get a lot of people who give us feedback and tell us we're not doing a good job, but it takes a lot to step up and run. And, and so I just want to thank everybody who ran during the election cycle. I mean, it just, it, it takes, it's such a personal thing, and it just, you know, involves your family and everything. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who is willing to put, put their service out there for the city. And we see that demonstrated time and time again when the boards open, and we have so many people come out, and we have great people in this city. And I just want to thank everybody who, who did decide to run. And I look forward to working with you all. I guess I'll be senior member again.
[laughing]
And finally certified like Mr. Hickinbotham. So, so anyway, thank you so much.
You're a certified senior member. That's, all right, 5 o'clock for finance, but you're a certified senior member. No one else can say that, Mr. Jones, so you should be proud of yourself.
Thank you.
I'm going to go get my certified. I checked into the CMO, but they won't let me. You have to be an election official.
There you go. Mrs. Smith?
I will set Special Issues for 6:45 on the 19th, and just ditto to what Mr. Jones said. He said it better than I could, so I'll just tag on to him.
And Mr. Wyatt?
I think not.
One more week. I want to thank the Homewood Environmental Commission for the collection of yard signs. It was a rainy, rainy Saturday, and they still managed to collect a large number of signs. And then I met some people yesterday out and about to get some. People dropped some off at my house. I stacked them up under the deck this morning, and they're two stacks, both of them taller than me. I mean, that's how many we have, and that's going to be going to probably NeoWaste. They will be recycled, let me say that first, but probably they'll be going to NeoWaste. But Counselor Smith and I have got some work to do on recycling. Counselor Gualtney, if you want to join us on that as well. And, but, but they will be recycled, they will not be in a landfill, and they were literally two stacks taller than me. That's how many we have. And, and I will echo what somebody on Facebook said. Those signs represent a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work behind each and every one of those signs. So again, like Counselor Jones said, thanks to everyone who ran. Gave their best for the city. We appreciate it. Congratulations.
That's almost too much election, but so be it.
It was a lot.
Mr. Harden?
I echo Dr. Jones, as he's known. It is a lot of work, and I appreciate people, even those who run against you for stepping up and running for, against, running and wanting our city to do better. We are a great city. We're doing fabulous. We could improve in many areas. I know that, but overall, thank you, City Council, for the work y'all have done over the past four years. Some of, some of folks are leaving us, but I just want it to be stated that I think our city is doing fabulous. It's great fiscally. Let me repeat that, we're very good and are very...